We'll call them, we'll call the order and roll call please.
Commissioner there? Commissioner Turnbull?
Present.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Present.
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Vice Chair Parks?
Present.
Com- Commissioner Chinowith?
Present.
Commissioner Rose?
Okay, there, um, the row has been called. I'd like to read a brief statement, please. This meeting is being conducted telephonic or electronically pursuant to an executive order twenty twenty dash oh seven, signed by Governor Pritzker and guy and guidance provided by Lee Consul. More importantly, based on what we know now about the coronavirus pandemic and prudent precautions as a result thereof, it is being, it is being conducted in a way to provide the maximum amount of protection to our board, staff, and community. We apologize for any inconvenience to anyone, but we ask for your understanding and compliance temporarily. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna start the program, uh, the meeting, uh, approval of the agenda item. It's been, uh, probably moved. Could I get the second? I didn't.
I'll, I'll second that. Was that what you were asking for?
It was moving a sec. Roll call.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Okay, um, item three, uh, public comments on non-agenda items only.
And again, if, if you're in the audience and you have a public comment, uh, do the hand raise if you can, let us know. So you have an opportunity to speak. Okay, so we got, uh, one person. Okay, Eric.
Hello, everybody. I am Regina Parnell and I own a home there in Urbana where it's being rented by a tenant, um, that has section eight voucher. My question is, what, um, requirements when the lease is up are you guys, uh, would be set in place to protect not only the tenant, but the owners also?
Okay. Okay, sorry, there you go. Um, so, so ma'am, the, the public hearing section is, you know, uh, I mean, the public comment section for, uh, uh, either, uh, citizen members to make comment. Uh, what you asked is a particular question. Uh, I would ask if you go through our, uh, either contact the voucher department or go through the office of constituent services. We can be sure to follow up and answer that question thoroughly for you. Uh, it can be, it's the office, uh, constituent services on our website. Uh, we respond in, uh, around forty-eight hours, uh, any questions or concerns you had. So we can have somebody contact you and, uh, go over all that information on what you are related to that. Uh, W, if you go to www.hacc.net.
Can you put that in the chat for me so I can make sure I have the correct website to visit, please?
Okay, uh, w- one of the staff members put that in the chat, the actual link to the offices of constituent services, um, for me. So she can have that, please. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Dr. Parnell? Can you hear me?
Oh, you gotta unmute her, uh, um, we control unmute. So you gotta un- unmute her, um, Jean, please unmute, um, uh, Dr. Parnell.
Sorry, I'm controlling the, um, mute. Who are we supposed to unmute?
Oh. Okay. Is she unmuted?
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I just wanted to congratulate you, Dr. Parnell, on completion of your PhD from USC.
Thank you.
Congratulations and kudo.
Thank you. Me too. I saw that in your yard. Very good work. I would have been getting mine too if I would have kept going. I think I'm gonna go back though.
Thank you. I'm still doing hard work in Champaign, Urbana. I'm gone, but I will not forget the, the people that held me up and supported me, especially my pastor, Pastor Parks.
Okay, no, here are no, no further comments on non-agenda items. We'll move on to item number four, approval of the minutes. They have a ro- uh, motion to approve.
Motion to approve the minutes?
From April twentieth, twenty, oh, uh, oh, twenty twenty.
Oh, twenty twenty.
Uh, mo- motion was made. We need a second.
Second.
Lily, you gotta, uh, you gotta unmute the, uh, board members so they can communicate.
Uh, they should be able to unmute themselves.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. Nope. All right.
Okay, Ryan Parks, you unmuted.
Am I voting or am I giving a say?
A second.
I'm confused. Second.
It wa- it was a motion, it was, so, so just to go back over, it was a motion made to approve the, uh, minutes from the regular, uh, meeting, minutes from April twenty-third, twenty twenty. Motion was made by, uh, Commissioner, um, um, Turnbull.
Second emotion.
Second.
Probably, it's been probably moved a second. Can we have roll call?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner, uh, Chinowith?
Yes, for some reason, when I try, it seems like the host is muting me. I will mute myself, so you don't have to mute me. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Rose, I saw him come in later.
Okay, the, um.
I don't know if he. Is Commissioner Rose might be muted as well. There you go.
Can I, can, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I had a correction to make to the motion, but I didn't get it in time. That's okay. That's fine. There was a correction to the, uh, to the, uh, number four of, of the, uh, the minutes from last month.
Okay, we'll.
Well, that's, that's fine. We, we just, we'll, uh, I'll, I'll talk to somebody after the fact.
Why don't you go ahead, uh, and make the, make that correction and we can.
Okay, I think it says, uh, we, we approved minutes from an annual meeting. And it wa- it wasn't an annual meeting and it should have been the meeting, uh, we approved the minutes from February meeting.
Correct.
Can we make that, can we reflect that change? And then have the, uh, the motion.
Yes.
I didn't hear that. What changes he making?
On section four of the minutes, it made a reference to the approval of annual meeting minutes and it should have only been the April meeting minutes, not annual.
Okay. Yeah, and then, and then we also approved the minutes from February twenty-seventh and not the April meeting.
All right. So based on that, if you could, Willie, if you could be so kind as to take roll again, I don't think everybody voted, but if, if you could, all of you could confirm. Easy for me to say, sorry, if all of you confirm that, uh, you approve of the revised minutes.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obuchowski?
She's saying I, but she's muted again.
Uh, yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Must be muted.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Thank you, Willie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Rose, for bringing that to our attention and getting it, uh, approved. Thank you. Item number five, new business.
Really, we don't really have any new business this month. Uh, we thought about not having a meeting, but we really want to, you know, stay engaged and stay in touch with our board members so that we could, uh, you know, continually move forward, especially during this downtime. I, I, I will say this, though, as we move into, um, you know, uh, starting to reopen, um, the team's working on a number of plans to reopen slowly. Uh, we're not, you know, jumping all in it, so, uh, we're working on a plan internally along with having a few, uh, thermostats, uh, radar, infrared ther- thermostats that we're using to try to monitor and make sure that people are healthy, you know, when they come in and out of the building. Um, so, you know, but actually we have no agenda items on the new business that we need to vote on, uh, for this board meeting.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. North, and, uh, just make a couple of comments myself. Given this opportunity, uh, this is our second Zoom meeting. Hopefully, uh, I don't know how much longer this is gonna go, but I can see everybody, but you can't see me apparently, so. But we'll keep moving through the agenda. Item number six, chief executive officer report.
I don't know why. Visible. At least you can hear me now. I don't know why I'm not visible.
If you click, uh, uh, Commissioner Rose, if you click, um, it should be an audio. If it say, uh, audio, if you click that, not audio, but if you, um, a camera, video, it say video. If you click video, then you can be, uh, you'll be visible if you got a camera on your, um, uh, computer.
It doesn't show how to.
If, if. I had a camera before, remember when we did it?
Yeah, long time ago.
It, it should be at the bottom, it should be at the bottom of your screen. And while he's looking for that, I just want, you know, in terms of going into the executive report, the CEO report, I, I just wanna say, you know, I know it's, it's a little inconvenient, it's kinda challenging. Uh, we, we switched over from.
So that it's on part, I just.
We, um, we switched from go to meeting to Zoom because we have better opportunity to control it. And the reasons being is that it's been a number of outbursts throughout the country where individuals, uh, you know, logging into meetings, um, doing all kinda obscene type stuff. And so we want to try to protect against that. And so in doing so, it may be a little, uh, challenging, you know, in terms of the timing. This is the first time we use this where we can control it. But we want to ensure that, you know, our meeting wasn't utilized to, 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 uh, you know, uh, flirt out racist stuff or all other kinda stuff that's been going on across our country right now. So we want to make sure we protect it from that. So please forgive us, uh, for the little delays that we're all having. So we're trying to, uh, work through it though. Uh, but it, in moving into our.
Yeah, also with this, sorry, also with the Zoom meeting, you can, even if you don't send us a link, if we get the password and the meeting ID, you can go into Zoom. If you have Zoom downloaded on your phone or in your computer, you can put that in and automatically get into the meeting without you sending us a link. Because I do that all the time every time with the caseworkers. Yeah.
And, and so, and so moving on to the executive record report, you know, we've been, you know, quite busy, as you know, we've been, uh, continually working in, uh, both at the, uh, national, state, and local levels with other housing partners, uh, and other community members to, you know, better serve our clients and, and remain, um, you know, a legitimate agency and moving our agenda forward related to housing as many clients as we can here in the county. Uh, we did partner and, uh, was able to pass out a number of masks to, uh, all our senior rad properties. Uh, we have another project that we're working on, uh, with a local fraternity where we're, uh, you know, uh, purchasing t-shirts and we're gonna make, uh, the reusable mask to give out to other non-for-profits or, um, low-income clients. That's coming up when we decide to make our mask, it'll be on Zoom, we'll be making.
Yeah, one time there was a camera there and we pushed on it, nothing happened.
Oh, do you see, oh, see, I see, well, you just muted, I see you muted yourself. If you go to the bottom where you muted yourself, it should be a, a camera that says stop video or start video, I believe.
Also, if he doesn't have it turned on in his settings, he won't get in it, he also on Zoom. You have to go into your settings and put that on also.
And so, so again, we, we plan on, uh, creating those masks on, on a Zoom call, uh, as a group. So you guys welcome to be a participant in that also, um, we'll be getting that information out soon. Uh, I, I was, um, part of a podcast that our HUD, uh, Midwest Regional Administrator had. It's called Midwest Matters, where he talks about our response to COVID nineteen along with other, uh, specialized programs and projects that we're doing here in Champaign County and throughout our state. Uh, it, it was nice to be able to ha- hold that conversation with our, um, regional administrator, that's the same, uh, gentleman. Uh, Joe Galvin, who, uh, had, um, uh, spoke at our gala earlier this year. Uh, a number of industry groups, we just, you know, provided some information around the heroes at, uh, from the housing, uh, Illinois Housing Council, uh, for the board members review. Um, we continually work with a number of our partners in the community when they have special, um, projects or programs going on. And we worked with Hospice Hearts, uh, animal rescue, uh, donation. And so another two hundred and eighty masks was able to be given out to various seniors and have participated in that. Uh, Youth Build is doing very well. Uh, we went through our second week, uh, you know, tenth day, uh, where our team were, uh, going through mental toughness. I had opportunity to present to the, uh, young people a few times and it is great. So that, you know, we're utilizing our partnerships and our resources. Uh, Lily's team has done a great job so far. Uh, we have about, I think, eleven thousand five hundred dollars that's been donated to our UPL program. And that, a lot of that money goes to help, you know, bridge the digital ga- the gap that we have. So we can purchase our participants on i, um, Chromebooks and we're working on a program now to ensure they have access to Wi-Fi also. Let's see. Oh, yeah, yeah. So we got about ten thousand from the COVID relief fund for, um, to help, you know, the digital, uh, I think, get, um, ACES, um, access capital. Uh, at a research park, they gave us a thousand dollars and I know somebody else recently gave us another five hundred in order to help in our efforts. Uh, Chris Health Agent Center, um, which we had a partnership with them for about almost two years now and they're working on our senior buildings. Um, they were giving out, uh, food and wellness kits to our, our clients. So our team got together and really worked with them in order to ensure that that project will come to fruition. We had to get a number of our, number of information for them to provide those packages. In terms of looking at our finances, um, we saw that in the capital fund program from a nu- number of years back, we had enough, uh, about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we needed to draw down as part of our, uh, four million dollar MUD work, um, block grant funds. And that, most of that's related to the, uh, closing of the Haven, which is currently twenty-four units leased up in the other part of it. The senior three-story is set to be open in August. Uh, so we're working with HUD to get access to that money so we can redistribute that money throughout our programs. Um, but that's the last of the capital fund money as relates to our, our closing of our final, uh, rad property, and that was the Haven, um, uh, with the sale of Stair Place. And, uh, lastly, uh, one of the things that we've done, uh, and, and, and we've done a lot to help our, our staff through, uh, this difficult time because we always know that our staff is our biggest assets and without them, we cannot possibly serve our clients. Um, but we did come together when we saw it was a need in, in terms of, in the community. Uh, you know, we have weekly or bi-weekly calls related to COVID relief efforts, related to homeless providers. Uh, we're a house, and so we're at the table with the municipalities and the townships. And so, you know, we was able to put our heads together and the housing authority came out with a, a, a weightless preference, uh, um, uh, for, to provide us with a continuing of care. Uh, we called it the COVID, uh, stay-home, um, uh, voucher, where, you know, it's a number of shelters. And the shelters, uh, continually having people come and come and come and people staying. And so our goal was to eliminate that burden on the shelters, people that we can move from a sheltered environment uh, to, uh, stabilized housing where they can be at home and be safe and not be a part of that environment. And some of those beds and rooms can open up for other families and individuals that may need to be in a shelter. Uh, you know, we started it less than two weeks ago. We already got over forty-eight, uh, forty-seven referrals the last time. I gotta count. We set aside fifty vouchers. So, I mean, it's a, it's a project, a program that we saw a need for. And, uh, you know, we came to the table with our partners and it's, it's, you know, I don't, I don't think anyone's been leased up as of yet, but I think the first briefing's will be held in the very near, uh, uh, early next week so we can start leasing people up. So I'm excited about the teamwork that our, our staff, um, you know, deal with that and, uh, and, and partners in the community in terms of helping us and, and to, to advise that, um, um, and that preference to help the families here in Champaign County. Um, currently, we're working on a number of items, uh, you know, with community partners. We're looking at possibly doing self-test with some of our clients. We work with the health department. Again, we working on a slow reopening, we looking on, we looking at how we can devise, uh, safety around our clients that we have to see in office at different times. And so our teams are really working together as a united force to ensure that once we do open, uh, we'll have that ability to open up safely to our staff members and our clients and the public overall, um, once that occur. Uh, unless any commissions have any particular questions about the executive director, executive director and CEO report, we can move to the, uh, operations report. And again, in far as related to the operations report, we provide the commissioners overview of our activities in, uh, relate to each department. Uh, you know, I don't wanna go through the whole report, but if there's any particular questions that any commissioners had, uh, we'll be happy to answer them now. Um, you know, if not, we can move to the, uh, financial, where we can allow Miguel to go over some, uh, financial items related to the, um, the bills in our financial reports.
David?
Yes, sir.
This is Jim. Um, it looks like we have some of the units rented at, uh, Haven at Marketplace. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. We had, um, based on a, a tax credit compliance, uh, we had to have twenty-four units leased up. I think it was about the end of January or February, we was able to complete that even going through some of the tough times of, of this. So we have twenty-four units leased up at Haven. And we have, I think, close to what Tiffany, fifteen or twenty leased up at, uh, Bristol Place also right now.
I had a question.
Yes.
Uh, hmm, what's the, um, for, so as we know, there are millions of people in the country have been laid off. Um, we've seen a number of laid off, you know, we've seen a slew of layoffs here locally. How is the housing authority responding to layoffs in light of our move to work program? How are we accommodating situations where, um, you know, I, I don't know how many of our move to work participants have been laid off. I was trying to decode that in the reports. Um, and kind of what, I know there, there's a period of time we give them to, um, to, to get employed again. And, um, and it just, just wondering how we're, uh, shifting in the moment, given that, uh, challenge that so many people are facing.
Well, well, two things, I, I can, I can make, make note and I'll allow maybe Tiffany or Tamika to follow up as of on brief comments on it. Uh, because of the stays and the stay and the laws is out now about terminations, uh, we're, we're, as a housing authority, since we know we're limited in terms of what we can do and what our clients can do, we're trying to, uh, not focus on anything related to hurting, harming our clients. Uh, you know, we're trying to get people leased up in terms of, you know, with the abilities that we have now. And so we are working with those clients. Uh, nobody's been, you know, uh, negatively impacted by that. They, they have a waiver in our normal program and we extending that waiver, uh, to ensure that they, uh, you know, are safe. Now, I know some clients that may, that may want stuff re, uh, uh, recertification done today or tomorrow, but that's really not the case that we can get it done that fast in this type of, um, a matter right now. And so we're, we're trying to work with them, let them know that, uh, we're not, it, it will be no negative impacts on them. And we're, uh, as, as we continue, we're gonna work with every client to ensure that all changes are made, noted, and, uh, everything is updated in, in time we met.
Okay, yeah, it's helpful. It sounds like so. If somebody loses their job, I know that we, you know, with our doors closed and staff shifting, it's in our office, it's been a big challenge as well. Just trying to, um, maybe their, their income may not be adjusted immediately because I know that there's some delays in that. But will they then be adjusted once you are able to catch up? Um, they're, they'll basically receive a rent credit or adjustment retroactively. Is that, that how it works? I know there are no evictions happening right now, so we don't have that like imminent harm, but that's what I'm hearing, you're saying. Is that correct? That essentially people are having the income adjustments made, um, it's just that there may be some delays in making those income adjustments.
Even though we're close to the public, we're still working behind the scenes and rent changes are being completed as they're turned in. So there's not a, a large lag or, or delay. Um, Tamika can correct me if I'm incorrect, but, um, there's not been a large, um, uh, delay. When we receive them, we're doing the, um, we're doing the rent changes for the following month.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, I want just to mention behind you, Danielle, um, I think I spoke with Davis about this before, about, uh, some of the residents being tested. Uh, did you find out about that, what we talked about, about, you said that, uh, something was coming up? You were looking into something or something?
Well, we, we are working with the, uh, health department. Uh, we had asked them originally to come out and set up a mobile testing center for our clients in our senior buildings, you know, we knew it was challenging for them to, uh, try to get way over to, uh, some of the test sites. And they weren't able to do that for a number of reasons, staffing wise, so, uh, we're working with them now. They have a, a, a new system where it's a self-test that, uh, clients can take. And we can collect it and then they can pick it up and then they, uh, return a test. I don't know all the ins and outs on how that work, working. I know, uh, I don't know if it's Tiffany or Stephanie, one of you guys was leading the effort. So I know that we are bringing that to the table for our clients to have those tests, um, taking, taking place.
Didn't I also, I know it's a HIPAA law and you can't mention, uh, people's privacy, but we haven't had an outbreak of that in any of the buildings that way, cause we go by, goes by zip codes. I mean, you can look at a public health site and they'll say six, one, eight, two, oh, so many cases, six, one, eight, two, one, there's so many cases. But due to that, it's Privacy Act. I know that you can't tell that disclosed that.
Well, we haven't, we haven't received any confirmed cases. Uh, you know, if we had received a confirmed case in one of our buildings, we had a scare, so we had started working towards some efforts, but it ended up, uh, not being an actual confirmed case. Um, so at this point, we haven't had any known confirmed cases of any of our multi-family buildings, um, that we operate.
Okay, thank you.
Well, before we, since there's any other questions from commissioners, I wanted to briefly talk about, uh, the, um, the, the resident commissioner and then we can go into the financial part. Uh, on, 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 starting back early this month, we started having, not this month, early this year, we started having some conversations. One, we already know we wanted to work on looking at, we wanted to look at redoing our bylaws cause it, uh, there's a number of changes that the housing authority made as we moved and transitioned out of the traditional method of public housing into the rad, uh, focused, uh, method of, of, of how business is done. Therefore, some of the guidelines, rules, and regulations, uh, that we have in our bylaws or how we act in as a, uh, organization today may need to be changed. One of those we talked about was the, uh, that we missed briefly at the board meeting, but behind the scenes, we've been doing some work with, um, a number of players. The resident, uh, uh, the resident commissioner, uh, appointment. And so, uh, Dr. Henry, uh, Commissioner Turnbull, Eric Hansen, I think Jean, our other attorney, uh, Tiffany and, and I, uh, met along with a few staff members and we've had a conversation with appointed officials around, uh, around this topic. And so what we provided you guys, uh, Dr. Henry, uh, and, uh, Commissioner Turnbull kinda agreed that allow us to provide the board members with a couple of options on how we should act based on our change of the housing authority. So that's what we provided you guys. Um, and, you know, so once we agree as a, as, as a unit, uh, on one of those options, then we can, you know, start working with our, uh, appointed officials because it's a number of, in that letter I sent you, there was a number of bu- uh, laws that needed to be changed in order for us to move forward with it. Currently, how it's set up, uh, you know, it's a vote, uh, process, um, you know, for, uh, but with, with us changing out of traditional public housing, we don't really have resident councils. Uh, right now, we really didn't have any active, uh, resident councils that represented a cross-section of all our, uh, uh, programs. And that's what our goal is, to move toward having a, you know, cross-section of, uh, a, a resident advisory board where that's a cross-section, whether we decide on, as a voting opportunity or, 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 you know, allowing the, uh, officiating officers to select from one of the clients. Uh, we do believe that we still should have a representative, uh, from our, uh, uh, from, from our programs and that, you know, HUD still, that's one of HUD's goals, even though we're moving out of, um, traditional public housing. We do have HUD-funded programs with clients there. So those were the two options that, you know, we kinda came up that we thought, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that, Eric? So those were the two options that, you know, we kind of came up that we thought, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Eric, from our conversations that we had.
Um only thing I want to know, when did we change to not being um changed, uh you said we changed back into public housing, when did we change in that, what year was in?
I I I didn't understand your question.
What year did we change? Uh when did that change? Like when you first started moving to work, uh when did that change?
Uh well, when when we started converting from public housing to RAD, our last conversion took place on in twenty eighteen. And so that's we uh December twenty eighteen was our last uh RAD conversion. Um and so that's when we moved out of the traditional public housing um framework.
David, you said there were two options. Um can you articulate like number one and number two, cause I didn't hear two options of what you said, but I maybe I missed something.
Tiffany, can you take care of that for me, please? She could you explain the two options that we sent to commissioners far as a resident commissioner um selection?
Sure, would you like me to um read the the document or?
I mean, how just yeah, just make sure that, you know, all the commissioners completely, uh I mean, understand, you know, the two options, how it how it breaks down for us, please.
Okay. Um the purpose of the proposal is to provide options to the selection process and appointment of the resident commissioner to the Housing Authority of Champagne County Board of Commissioners. After reviewing pertinent HUD code of regulations, um hack has determined viable alternatives for selection. The first option is that the Champagne County Board of Chair would choose the resident commissioner and make the final appointment to the Hack Board of Commissioners. This election process would mirror the process as to how other packages are selected. It is also common practice in the housing industry. The Hack bylaws will be amended and approved to reflect this change in policy. The intergovernmental agreement between the City of Champagne, City of Urbana and Champagne County would be amended to reflect this change. So that would be the first option with having the county board chair appoint the resident commissioner, which is similar to how the other commissioners are appointed. The option would be to uh Hack would invite housing authority participants to be a part of a resident advisory board. The federally mandated role of the RAB is to assist and make recommendations regarding the development of the M of the P uh MTW plan. And any significant modifications to the the MTW plan. In this option, Hack would extend the role to include the selection of possible candidates for resident commissioner. The that would become a collective body that is representative of the Housing Toys Voucher Program, the Project Program and the RAB Program. The RAB would review applications and choose a maximum of three possible candidates for resident commissioners. That can that those candidates will be referred to the Champagne County Board Chair. The Champagne County Board Chair would then select the resident commissioner and make the final appointment to the Hack Commissioners. The hack laws will be amended to outline the right how the RAB is selected, how candidates are referred, and the final appointment is determined for resident commissioner. Again, the interg- the intergovernment agreement between the City of Champagne, City of Urbana and Champagne County will also be amended.
So so just a just a follow up, just briefly on that, it's just that it just like any other commissioners appointed, the appointed official accept applications. Uh or resumes and they make a decision, so that's the first option, just to go back to a traditional sense. And that's how most house authorities commissioners, whether it be resident uh commissioners or 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 uh, you know, non-resident commissioners are done. Uh and the second one is to to have a a resident advisory board. Uh and the resident advisory board like pick what, three or four, Tiffany said, three or four uh residents that apply to it and they provide it to the uh the appointed official. Uh for on- once we vet it, we have to vet them and make sure they're in compliance with all our program uh rules and regulations. And then they select who they um appoint. So we we just is trying to uh make sure that whatever we do is a cross section of our clients, because we have clients in Rantoul, Mohammed. Uh Champagne or Ghana, we have tenant base, we have project base, we have uh low income housing tax credit. And we have uh uh RAB, so we want to make sure we got a selection, you know, of age group, disability or whatever, uh to help with that selection.
So just a point of process, um I did receive the memo about this, but I don't see it listed as an agenda. So the public is not aware that we're discussing this issue. And I guess I have some little discomfort um without stating it. I mean, I would be much more comfortable having this conversation where it listed on the agenda. Um and the public was, you know, provided the information they need to participate. Um so it's a point of process, I think it's an important conversation to have, but I'm I'm confused as to why it's not on the agenda formally. And I wonder if we're being asked to take action at this meeting.
No, no, I would I see it as that he uh David wanted, I I'm just guessing. But I see it as him just wanting us to know to be aware of what's going on, the commissioners first and then put it to the public. Cause it's just like if we're commissioners, we walk into something, we don't even know what's going on. So evidently, if we know what's going on and then put it in the public, then the public knows. But then and that gives us awareness that maybe you didn't even wasn't not aware that my term was coming up and that it was time to be redone. So I think he did it in a good manner, I believe. So I I'm I'm kind of biased on this because I'm gonna be running in that, so I have no, I'm just going on what people going on and what they want to do.
Commissioner Channelworth, if I if I could, I I don't necessarily think, and I could be wrong, but I didn't think that this was up for you to take action today. Because I think I think you wanted to get your thoughts and your input, but also uh this is something that's gonna have to be also approved by the county and both of the 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 cities, if I understand it, right, David?
Yeah, I was just, only reason I brought it up, because we did send it to you guys and is is part of my uh executive record, something that I'm working on, not for any action. We did, we sent it to the commissioners and said if they had any comments, questions or concerns, uh let us know. Uh Commissioner Obachowski did reach out, we had some conversations around it. Um so it wasn't, it's no voting on it, we just, I just brought it up again in our um in in terms of our our operations and executive record report, just because I know it's a level of importance. And I wanted to just, I only heard from one commissioner as related to it, so that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, because some of the stuff, I didn't even know that you just telling me about all that stuff, so that's new stuff to me. So hallelujah, I love to know it first, since I'm a commissioner, before you put it in the public, cause that's what we supposed to know, it's no. Hallelujah, so I I'm, you know, whatever you guys decide, you know, whatever you go on, that's what it's gotta be.
So did uh what I hear is they'll come back to the board as a bylaws change. And essentially, we won't take action on it until we would amend our bylaws to allow for this.
Yeah, so this is just this is this is like a regular conversations coming up. I just wanted to make sure that, one, until uh the changes are made or a replacement is made, the current commissioner serves. And so it's not a hurry, so in a big scheme of things, what we dealing with today in terms of COVID nineteen and ensuring that we provide safe, decent centered housing. That that this is a very important item, but it wasn't at that level of importance that we want to rush it through. So we wanted to take our time, the staff came back, we met and discussed it uh related to the uh uh suggestions. And so we wanted to make sure our board members had time to look at it before we even brought anybody else in terms of, you know, talking to other officials and people like that later to it.
But thank you for addressing my process question. I do have a content question in the first option, and maybe this is obvious, because it's called the resident commissioner. But would the county board chair be allowed to appoint someone who is not a participant in housing authority programs?
No.
Okay, so in both cases, it's a resident and in one case, the county board chair plays much more of a cultivation role. And in the second, there are a resident advisory board, which we'd have to kind of reenact, it sounds like, or. Yeah. Kind of breathe life into would play more of a curation role.
Yes.
Okay, that clarifies for me, yeah, and and you know, I I am very supportive of a resident advisory board. Um I think it's really important to, I mean, my philosophy in my office is that uh the people who are closest to the problem are closest to the solution. Um and I really think that um uh, you know, having a resident advisory board to advise us in in a lot of different areas and to provide that feedback is really important. Um so I do know that there's some staff overhead and there's some additional investment we'd have to make administratively to kind of support that piece. Um but I do think that um having that resident advisory board to play all those different roles and to help with the selection process. I would strongly encourage us to, I guess, kind of keep with what we have now, except um, you know, maybe uh the the process looks a little bit expanded from what we currently have.
Okay, yeah, I I agree with that, we need to revise, we need a resident advisory board for a number of submissions to HUD. And so at different times, you know, different advisory boards I use for different things. Uh you know, so uh you know, we depending on the subject, like, you know, you may have a resident advisory board of uh twenty people, two people may show up. You know, it just depends on what the clients decided to do. Um but I do agree with you in terms of uh, you know, the clients need to be at the table and helping guide in the decisions that's made that's affecting, you know, their future stuff.
Yeah, cause the resident commissioner is standing up for the residents, so resident advisory board is in place for that, that is correct.
I just, I wanted to ask a quick question and you may have um already addressed this uh in your question, in your uh in your comments, Commissioner Channelworth. I um sorry, I was messing with the Zoom, getting it to work, um I might have missed it. I just wanted to check, are, so is this something then that like what would be the next sort of decision-making step in this process? Is that something that does come to the commissioners and then goes to the county board, if that's the direction or or towards the development of new bylaws for a resident advisory board? Like what, kind of what sort of decision-making steps are we sort of looking to happen next as a as a board here?
That's me or you, David?
Well, I I was gonna say that, you know, we wanted to get your board members' feedback, um if it's something that you guys kind of agree with it. Uh one way or another, we want to fine tune it and bring it to the board uh for for next month. So then, once we approve it, we can send it, but once we approve it, there's no guarantee that the other officiating and officials, uh appointed officials will agree. But once we agree, we can at least start that conversation with them to see how they feel about the changes that may come to fruition. Cause also, uh just, you know, uh you guys something to add to that, Eric?
No, I was, I would, you you pretty much nailed it, I was gonna say, like, once you guys are good with it, then we can concurrently send it out to everybody else. Just to make sure that the county, the cities and the county are good with it. But if there's any other tweaks, we would have to come back to you, but otherwise, I think we'd be.
We 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 didn't want to, we didn't want to start this big conversation with everybody and you guys not be understanding from top to bottom where it was, what had to input, so.
Yeah, uh yeah, I appreciate.
I haven't really looked over the two things you had, so the next meeting would be great, hallelujah, give me time to really evaluate mostly all that stuff in Jesus name.
Yeah, I appreciate the the background information and the opportunity to just kind of discuss it as a board before before we're asked uh to make any decisions about it. And also just to to echo some of the other comments and um just to sort of reiterate what I um sent to you in my email is that all that. Regardless of their direction, having a resident advisory board to 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 give input on all of the programs, I know that there's been a lot of issues that have um come up. Regarding, you know, the people who are actually using um using services and um, you know, using the support from the housing authority, having kind of input on um. And and so, yeah, anything that we can do to support that, um I would, I'd be very interested in having those conversations, so.
Yeah, because we have to really make sure that right, because we don't want outsiders coming in and speaking on that what wasn't done right, hallelujah. Cause there was a big blow up before with this stuff. So we're gonna make sure you do it right this time, because we didn't want to be in the news. So I don't want to be in the news, hallelujah, and I'm pretty sure nobody else wants to be in the news. So we want to make sure we get everything right and everything dotted and stuff like that.
Enough of no negative stuff, we don't want to be in the news. But the last thing I'm gonna mention before I allow uh Miguel to go on, uh you know, Dr. Henry and myself, uh Eric, we've had a lot of conversations around a tax issue. Uh and I just wanted to report, I've had some conversations with Commissioner Channelworth also about it. So this week, I had a conversation with Urbana, well Cunningham Township Assessor's Office, the mayor's office and the uh city manager about, you know, Hamilton on Park, the the tax lawsuit along with. Uh what what's moving forward, what what's the goals and what should we expect as an agency? And I think that was a great conversation that we had, um you know, and 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 uh I have a little homework to do in terms of providing us some information. But they did agree that uh pound will will not, will will only have to pay the payment of lower taxes. And that they, you know, looking at maybe getting out this lawsuit so we can better uh make some um uh, you know, uh agreements around developing more affordable housing in Urbana area. Because it was a kind of a deterrent to it, so I think, you know, just sitting down uh together as a group with, you know, uh uh Commissioner Channelworth kind of helped in terms of guiding that direction. Um with the city and uh uh Assessor's Office uh was very helpful, I mean, we had a great conversation. And I'm uh, you know, thankful that, you know, we can agree that in in best interest of all the citizens that we serve in. Um to pay the payment of lower taxes, uh to develop affordable housing, uh you know, is 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 something that direction we want to move in. Um you know, it's all party, so we're not finally, it's not done finally yet, but they did confirm that pound will, we will only have to pay our payment of lower taxes. Uh Eric, we did mention about the formers, I know you have sent something and Miguel has some stuff, so I want to package that and send it to the mayor and the Assessor's office. Uh so we can follow up that conversation, so that was very helpful to have that uh conversation this week. And unless there's any other questions, uh Miguel, it's on you, sir.
Thank you. So on page thirty eight, we have the summary of the cash disbursements for April. Uh where we had a disbursement for fifty nine thousand five eighty. Uh and as usual, uh I would like to point out what were the the highest uh items in this uh. This is disbursements uh on page forty one. We have a disbursement for Prospect Senior of thirty five thousand. And this is recurring, uh you may recall from our previous meeting, is the uh vacancy uh. Vacancy uh uh payment that that's been done every month. Uh on that same page forty one, uh uh. Pretty much a recurring payment also, uh it's all health or health insurance for all of our employees for a total of twenty twenty one thousand five hundred. Uh and finally, on page uh forty three, the other uh endorsement worth mentioning. It's a payment to PBO for thirty three thousand seven eighty three. PBO is acting as our fee accountant and they have been uh helping us uh to bring this transition. Uh to get uh all the information. Actually, uh you, this is the first uh month when that we're coming with financial statements for the first quarter. Uh all of this was uh something done uh between our office and and the help of PBO. The goal is to uh be become less dependent from BDO and uh just uh have their services. Uh more than an advisory level, but for now, uh I had to recur to to their uh assistance. And with everything going on with COVID nineteen and people remotely, it is is just has make it a little worse. But uh other than that, those are the only uh disbursements that I think are worth uh mentioning.
Are there are there any question?
I I had a question. Um there are some charges for lease breakage fees at Gramercy Park and at Town and Country Apartments, could somebody explain those or what that is?
Yes, that that is correct, uh and I'm not sure if uh Robin's also on 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 the phone. But uh from what I can understand, uh it is referred to the tenants. Uh that moved out of Skelton uh and had to be relocated temporarily in uh some apartments. And now they went to uh Haven at the marketplace and some some of those uh landlords actually uh enforced on on releases. Uh clauses of of breaking leases uh uh charges.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I had a I had a question, um in looking at the finances, I know we have a number of nonprofits and and we're also creating the youth build. Um as a kind of separate, where um at what point do we see the um finances of those nonprofits for which we are also board members? I'm, I think, I I I'm pretty sure from reading these for a while that this. I'm, I think, I, I, I'm pretty sure from reading these for a while, that this is more of like our core administrative operations. And I'm just trying to understand where those um, finances live in, at what point we'll review them.
Uh, Miguel, you wanna mention that, but I, I can't say this, that what, what, what usually happens is that. Uh, since the parent company is the housing authority, uh, with those not-for-profits, a lot of times like it's general entries made, we may pay the bill. And a general issue is made to uh, you know, to, to uh, ensure that uh, bill is uh. Put in the right category in a sense for the right not-for-profit. And so uh, usually is that the uh, toward the end. We may have a run-in balance on different accounts that a not-for-profit may have, cause we create them all to keep all the finances separate. Um, but Miguel, I don't know if you wanna uh, add to that, cause we don't have monthly finance. Do we do, we don't do monthly financials for the not-for-profits, cause a lot of them don't even have any money, right?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Uh, as, as you said, Mr. Northman, uh. Some of the, the expenses uh, will, will be actually refunded. If we are doing any payments on behalf of them. What I can think of as uh, mainly the case of the. Uh, Enrichment Foundation. Has been, you know, the operations have been uh, more into increasing uh, activities. Uh, a few, a few events, like the Super Bowl party, for example. Uh, and also have been really minor, minor expenses, but definitely. We can come up with some uh, financial.
Well, why don't, why don't we do that, Miguel? Why don't we work together with Tiffany uh, and a fee accountant and add to the uh. The financial report, you know, each not-for-profit and any money holdings that they may have uh, in it. Uh, because like you mentioned, a lot of the activities are minor. We may pay for something out of a general account. Uh, and then it's like broken up into other, like maybe the Richmond Foundation, maybe youth bill later on in terms of general entries. So, so those numbers may change, but the only not-for-profit we really have any money in right now, I believe, is the Richmond Foundation. And that's under fifty thousand dollars, I know.
Yeah, be helpful, maybe just in the monthly reports to include those that can be broken down. Um, just it helps noting that we're um, legally and financially responsible for all of the nonprofits and the housing authority. To just know where, where our responsibility um, lies uh, with the review of those financials.
So for example, the money that we give from youth bill goes into youth bill's own account. So youth bill has this account, and so when we draw down that money, like the money from uh, you know, the housing choice voucher or RAB, they go into a various accounts. And, but they all under the same parent of the housing authority.
Don't they show, I'm sorry, so they show up on the, is financial reports?
Yes. There's no, there's, there's no money that we have access to, whether it's in a bank or. Held at HUD, it doesn't show up in terms of our, the financial reports we had. Now, we can do a better job of breaking them out and kind of showing where they are. But it's sometimes it's at the end of the quarter or so when we do journal.
Okay, yeah, anything to clarify, I would be super, um, but that's helpful to know that we're seeing all of them in the register every month.
It may not be broken out, because you know, I mean, it's uh, we, we, I mean, you guys understand why we have so many not-for-profits. That's because we wanna protect all the, all the assets of the agency. And so with having all those not-for-profits and not having an accountant, kind of working on each one, especially when, you know, so it takes us a little longer to do some of the journal entries. And it's usually done on a quarterly uh, basis uh, for some of the major ones. In most cases, the housing authority may pay for uh, you know, a, a survey. Cost for a development that we're doing. And then, once the not-for-profit get any money or development feedback, we get reimbursed for it. Uh, so, but all the monies that has come through the housing authority and its not-for-profits are reflected in the reports that uh, Miguel was uh, providing.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Is there any other questions regarding the financial reports? If not, I would like to entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been properly moved in a second. May we have roll call?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski? Vice Chair Henry? I mean, Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine, uh, is there any reason for a closed session?
Um, no, sir, we don't have a closed session. Uh, but I would like to have. Before we get off the meeting, I would have to have, I would like to have Lily give you guys just a brief update on youth bills, since it's so new and we're moving forward. I know I mentioned some items and we had some items, but I really would like for her to say a couple of words about, on the progression of what's going on. Cause that's such an important uh, asset and tool to the House Authority's uh, uh, you know, overall umbrella.
Okay, hi everybody. So a lot has been going on with youth build. We uh, started mental toughness about two weeks ago. Um, so we finished that up and we started with about twenty-four students and we ended with about fourteen. Um, and so all of the students that we have are either basic skill deficient, uh, low income, um, students who have been incarcerated. Uh, so they do fall into a high need category. And I think um, only two out of the fourteen already have a high school diploma. Um, and then they're all seventeen or older. Started with that, our first cohort begins on June first and we'll go through the high school diploma part of it. And so we've been uh, working on just getting different training uh, established for our, our staff. Um, and just getting to know the students and, and letting them get to know us in different parts of the housing authority. Uh, we have some activities scheduled for volunteering next week. They're gonna be delivering uh, some care packages to the seniors. Um, so there, there's been a lot going on. Um. A lot of great things that we're excited and we're moving. Uh, the community is really supportive. Uh, we've had a lot of people reach out to either give donations or support uh, within kind in any way. Um, lots of businesses have shown interest in the program. And so overall, we're really optimistic. Um, we've been working with um. Some different employers already. Uh, we're working with the University of Illinois to start an employment uh, bridge program for youth bill students. Who's successfully complete. So the University of Illinois will take them in and. Put them through the civil servant trainings and teach them how to take the, the, uh, the test and the best practices for the test. And so we're working on developing an internship uh, program with the University of Illinois. So they've been very uh, helpful and very supportive in this process. Everything is going well so far.
Okay, one question I wanna ask you. Um, how often do we have to reapply for that grant for the youth bill? Is that every two years, every year, or what?
Uh, every three years.
For the money to. Every three years?
Yeah, every three years. But our goal is to, uh, even if we don't get funded again, to have the program be self-sufficient. So that's the purpose of reaching out and connecting with different funders and uh, just making the program fruitful uh, and a benefit to the community. So.
So likely. Likely with this program and you, they usually funded, or actually, or they don't really give you another funding for it, they, you know, the people that apply for it.
Well, it's, it's a competitive process. A lot of times, they may find you the first couple of times of your meeting the guidelines and rules. But you, uh, for certain, we won't get funded every time we apply. And so the whole goal is that they, they kickstart us as a community. Uh, give us the resources to get it going, but the community need to get together and support and the success rate of our clients through this uh, will, will, will be helpful. And so, yeah, we are, we are uh, required to kind of raise some money or have in-kind services. That's why Lily and her team's been doing a good job of meeting with various partners. That's one of the reasons that we changed some of our, um, you know, we're working on our procurement. Section three and our bylaws uh, with the house, I mean, our, our policies with the house authorities, especially around construction. So that we can make sure that our, our participants in our program are, is engaged at the table. And receiving some of the funding and financing um, through all this construction that we're doing, so we can maintain our uh, you know, uh, survival into the uh, future.
Uh, I would just like to say that Lily, a lot of the people I've talked to have been very impressed with you and the work that you're doing. And uh, just keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Yeah, one, goodbye, everybody. Stay safe. I'm gonna stay here for a few minutes, but we, we open up tomorrow. Don't everybody get excited, cause we opening up, still do your distance. And also, hallelujah, wear those masks. There's a disease out there killing people. Some people are not acting like they understand that.
Hey Lily, I just had a quick question. When is the next opportunity for folks to apply A to the youth bill program, or is the cohort closed for this year?
Okay, so um, what we did with this cohort is we split it in two. Um, because of the virus, uh. We weren't able to really engage as many students as we would like, split this cohort in two. So we're gonna be enrolling a second cohort in about six weeks. Um, and at that point, we'll have another opportunity for about fifteen more students to uh, join this cohort. And they'll graduate about the same time. They'll all graduate uh, at the end of January.
Thank you.
No problem. I can send information uh, to you, to your office.
That'd be super. I would love to be able to get that worked out through our, our e-newsletter and social media. Um, just as long as I understand the criteria, um, just simplify that opportunity. It sounds like a really great opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing that we're finding is that um, I think seventy percent of our students are housing authority clients. So uh, the matches, you know, it makes sense for us to be running this program and be offering the opportunity. It's like an extension of the self-sufficiency program almost for the, the youth.
Well, uh, I think uh, if there's no other questions or comments, sir, I think the next thing is the uh, non-agenda items, public comment. And then we can maybe move for adjournment. Dr. Henry?
Yes.
I said, uh, since there's no more questions, we can even, we can move to like the non-agenda, non-agenda, non-agenda items. Public comment. And then if there's none, then we can move for adjournment, sir.
Okay, are there any public comments or, or non-agenda items? Hearing none, uh, kind of motion for adjournment.
Second.
We need it.
So moved.
Reverend Parks moved, uh, Turnbull second.
Been probably moved in a second for adjournment. The housing authority Champagne County Board Commissioners Meeting is hereby. Adjourned at four oh six PM.
We need a roll call, right?
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski?
Yes.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Chinowith?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Adjourned at four oh six PM. Thank you for all participating.